Members of the public, before we commence the meeting as usual I would draw your attention to the fire regulations on the screen behind me and on the screen facing the gallery. Can you all please ensure that your mobile phones are switched to silent? Thank you for the reminder, Chairman. And councillors, please speak directly into the microphone and make sure your card is pushed firmly into the console. Members of the public, I would like to say that as a committee we understand that matters under consideration tonight can be emotive, but please be respectful of others in the public gallery and indeed of the committee members. Thank you. To move on to the main items of business, the first item is confirmation of the minutes, and I understand that councillor Band would like to propose an addition or an amendment to those minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. In respect of our agenda, item A2 of our last meeting which relates to the Abbotnot Hall, after we had all taken the decision and supported the officer's recommendation, I think we did request that the officers would write to the applicant setting out some advice as to what the officers thought might be appropriate on that site. Now, as far as I'm aware, that's not yet been done, so I would appreciate if other members agree we could actually include a note to that effect in the minutes.
Thank you. Members, are you happy for that addition to be made to the minutes of our last meeting? Thank you. So with that amendment, are you happy for me to sign the minutes after the meeting as a true record?
Very pleased.
Thank you very much. There's no apologies for absence because we're all here, which is nice to see. Declarations of interest, Amy.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Mary Forashevsky has declared a non pecuniary interest in item A2, Little Dean, as she is known to the applicant. In the interest of public perception, she will leave the chamber while the item is considered. Also, councillors Jeanette and Stuart Stennett have declared a pecuniary interest in item A2, Little Dean, and will leave the chamber while that item is considered.
Thank you. Councillor Bayne.
Yes, on the application from Bramley, I am a friend of one of the local neighbours and one who has been objecting or is not speaking tonight, and therefore I will not be taking part.
Thank you. Any other... Yes, councillor.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, in connection with item A1 for this evening, I should just have it recorded that I'm a member of Bramley's planning committee which did consider that application and raised no objection to it.
Thank you. Any other committee members got any interest to declare? Thank you. Any questions by members of the public?
Thank you, Chairman. None received.
Any questions from members?
Also none, Chairman.
Good. Officers, any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting?
Thank you, Chairman. No.
Performance against government targets, Beth, I think you'll introduce.
Thank you, Chairman. Members will note on their update sheet the planning services' performance on the two government targets for speed and quality. You'll note that on the speed target that we are performing excellently. On the quality target, I just wanted to say a few words, as you'll notice that the last assessment period, we exceeded 10%, which is the target. You'll be aware that since, well, very recently, that the Follyhill Appeal Decision was issued to allow the appeal, so it shouldn't come as any great surprise to you that we exceeded the government target threshold for special measures in the last assessment period. Thankfully, the government published the final statistics prior to the Follyhill Appeal Decision because it was so delayed, so that decision actually didn't count, so it hasn't been registered with the government that we are poorly performing. However, you'll be aware that we have been updating the committee on this critical performance level for the last year, and this should serve as a warning that decisions on major applications and avoiding further major appeals is critical with a potential to impact the current position. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Beth. So we move on to the main items of business this evening. Applications for planning permission. Just to note that any site inspections arising from this meeting will be held on Monday, the 11th of February 2019, at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So the first item under consideration is item A1, our reference WA oblique 2018 1776, land at Mill Farm Cottage, Mill Lane, Bramley, GU5OHW, and the proposal is for the erection of a detached dwelling with new vehicular access and associated works, and Gemma is going to introduce the application. Gemma.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Mill Lane, and measures approximately 0.09 hectares. The site comprises the western half of the residential curtilage associated with Mill Farm Cottage and is currently accessed via a private driveway. For surrounding context, an aerial photograph demonstrates that the surrounding locale is prominently residential with a more rural character extending to the west of the site. This is a full application for the erection of a detached dwelling with associated access. The proposal would involve the removal of a 10.2 metre long section of hedge row to the front of the site in order to create an access independent to Mill Farm Cottage. The proposed dwelling would measure 11.4 metres in width, 12 metres in depth, and have a maximum ridge height of 7.8 metres. The principal elevation would include a projecting gable overhang feature. The rear elevation would feature a first floor Juliet balcony that would face towards the far rear curtilage of the site. Looking at the floor plans, the proposal would comprise a three-bedroom, a four-bedroom property. This slide demonstrates the differing land levels between the main highway and the site, and demonstrates the finished floor levels of the proposed dwelling. Planning permission was previously allowed by the planning inspector for an erection of a detached dwelling on the site of similar scale to that currently proposed. The next three slides will show photographs of the site. These photos are taken from the north-west of the site, looking on to Mill Farm Cottage. Members will note there is a difference in ground levels between the site and that of Mill Farm Cottage, which is demonstrated to be around 1.5 metres in difference. This slide indicates the extent of the frontage of the hedge row to be removed as part of the proposed development. These following photographs are taken from the private curtilage of Mill Barn, which is located to the west of the site. Members will note that Mill Farm Cottage can be viewed from this curtilage. Moving to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinion and matters of judgment set out on the slide. Officers are satisfied that the proposal would not harm the significance of the conservation area. The loss of the boundary hedge can be successfully mitigated for through securing a detailed landscaping plan and detailed boundary treatment planned, which are covered by conditions three and four on pages 22 of the agenda report. And existing trees can be protected through conditions five and six, as shown on page 23 of the agenda report. Officers are satisfied that technical matters such as impacts on the area of high archaeological potential, highways and parking, and flooding considerations have been addressed, and no objection to the proposal has been raised by the relevant professional bodies. With respect to biodiversity, officers note that the application has not been supported by any ecological information. However, it is highly material that Surrey Wildlife Trust were satisfied with the previous scheme without the benefit of any ecological information, noting that the site formed a garden curtilage which would likely reduce the risk of any works affecting legally protected species. Subject to a condition to ensure the removal of the front hedge row takes place outside of the main bird nesting season and a standard informative, officers are satisfied that there are no significant changes to the site that would otherwise result in a different conclusion to that previously given by Surrey Wildlife Trust. Therefore, subject to condition seven set out on page 23 of the agenda, officers are satisfied that the proposal would not cause harm to existing species. Moving to the right of the slide, members are being asked to exercise their judgment in matters of design, residential amenity, and impact on Green Belt. In doing so, members are asked to be minded of the appeal allowed by the planning inspector. Moving on to the update now, following a member's site visit, clarification was sought from the applicant in respect to the existing and proposed land levels. The applicant has submitted further plans in order to address these concerns, and condition one has subsequently been amended to reflect the submission of these plans. Therefore, the revised recommendation as set out within the update report is that subject to conditions two to 11 as set out on pages 22 to 27 of the agenda report, and amended condition one set out in the update report, that permission is granted. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Gemma. This application is subject to public speaking, and I would first like to invite the objector, Roger Mahoney, to speak. Good evening, Mr Mahoney. I understand the procedure has been explained to you, and you have four minutes from when you start speaking. Thank you.
My name's Roger Mahoney. I'm a chartered architect with over 40 years' experience in housing developments. My wife and I own Mill Barn, the property immediately next to the site. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the seven families who registered objections to this application, which we believe is an overdevelopment of the site driven by a desire to maximise profit. We all agree that the design-granted consented appeal was a good addition to Mill Lane, and we're disappointed that the planning officer's report does not directly compare the approval scheme to the current application. We think the planning inspector's report and the conditions imposed by him set an excellent planning brief against which the current scheme should be benchmarked. Our first concern is the loss of hedge along Mill Lane. This tall feature funnels the eye down the lane and into the Green Belt. It's a fundamental part of the character of the conservation area, and we think the planning officer is wrong to dismiss its importance. The approved scheme retains this feature by sharing the entrance to the site with Mill Farm Cottage, and we see no reason why a shared entrance would not work with this scheme. All the statutory bodies accepted this design solution, and the planning inspector protected the hedge with a condition. Opening up the site with a 10-metre gap in this essential landscape feature has no practical purpose. The planning inspector recognised the harm that an additional access would create by also imposing a condition that no new vehicular access into the site should be created. He clearly thought the tall hedge should be retained and protected. We're all concerned that the work has started on site without waiting for this planning committee to make a decision. The approved scheme conditions protected existing hedge rows and don't allow any changes in site levels. Despite this, the site has been built up with imported material, the pond has been filled in, hedges and trees have been removed, all without the oversight of this authority. The work to remove the boundary hedge between the development site and Mill Barn is, in our view, a real problem. The inspector did not think that overlooking was a problem when he visited the site, but at that time the hedge was still standing. Our kitchen wing was also, which was built in the 70s, was also omitted from the plans that they looked at, so the appeal benefited from a lucky error. Our kitchen has a ridge height of 3.2 metres, and that doesn't compare well with a 70.8 metre high house. The latest drawings also show a raised patio which would further raise the house to three storeys when viewed from our garden. The rear elevation has a Juliet balcony, it has large opening windows, all of which would impact on our privacy. The site slopes down into the valley, there's no topographical survey being provided, even though national standards for planning applications make that a requirement. The plan shows a terrace at the rear of the property with nine steps, but that's not shown on the elevations. The block plan doesn't show any of the surrounding properties. None of the documents that have been provided by the developers' architects superimpose the approved plans, and it all feels like they're trying to hide something. The latest drawings that have been produced have started to show some improvements, but they still don't answer the whole story, and because of these problems, we, the local residents, urge you to refuse this planning application.
Thank you very much, Mr Mahoney. I would now invite Toby Shea, the agent, to speak on behalf of the application. You can come out that way, yes. Good evening, Mr Shea, and you've had the procedure explained to you as well. Jolly good.
Right at the bottom. Okay, fine, thank you very much for the time. Firstly, I'd like to apologise. Obviously, we based the first set of plans on the previous scheme with the site levels, and we realised after the site meeting, when it was raised by the committee, that it didn't actually show the true levels, which was apparent at the time. I know it's been mentioned that we've changed the levels, we haven't at all, we've dug out the bank at the front and pulled it down, the pond has been filled in. The hedge to the left, I do not know, I mean, I know the next-door neighbours only recently purchased the property, but we haven't actually started any building work, the hedge has been there, so, you know, that doesn't come into consideration. From a planning perspective, I think the officer's report actually covers pretty much every aspect. There's very little I can add. We did, after the request from the committee, provide another plan to demonstrate the past scheme and how that sits within the new scheme, and I think if you look at that, there's probably about 60 centimetres or so surrounding the past scheme that was sent through yesterday, and I believe all of you have seen that. We were asked to produce an additional scheme showing the levels of the accommodation, as well as the street scene down one side, we did a cross-section, so you can see the houses on the opposite side of the road are actually substantially higher than us as well. I mean, I have very little to add, to be honest. I think I am very comfortable with the officer's report, and actually I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Waverley Borough Council, I've dealt with various plans before, and it's all been dealt with in a positive manner. We've tried to be reactive, as soon as we've been asked for additional information, we've provided it as quickly as possible, and it's been nice to have that information passed back and forth. So, as I said, I have nothing further to add, I think the officer's report is pretty comprehensive. I understand it's emotional, all change will be. I think the house is of a good design and it fits in nicely, it's far enough away from the boundary on either side of the property to meet all of the government requirements, and that's all I'd like to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Members. Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you, Chairman. As one of the ward members, I ask for this application to come to committee principally because of the concerns over the scale of the proposals, and to consider how well the new property will fit into the available space and the street scene. Bramley Parish Council in general did not share these concerns, but I know, and we've heard previously, that neighbours to the site have significant concerns. I thank colleagues and officers for taking time to join the site visit on Monday, I think it was extremely useful, and it flushed out some inconsistencies with the plans, which have subsequently been addressed, so that was useful. Those who attended the site visit may or may not have noticed the new house built last year on the opposite side of the road shortly before Mill Farm Cottage. That new property fits well with the street scene in terms of scale and design, and for me sets a good example of constructive infill, which I hope will be matched when we agree on a design for this application. So it's that match I really want to test. The successful 2017 appeal for a house on this site has established the suitability of the site for infill building in the Green Belt, the AONB, and within the conservation area, so those issues are not up for discussion. I believe that the significant issue for us to consider is the impact of the additional bulk added in this proposal relative to the extant permission. The plans we were provided with for the site visit highlighted potential inconsistencies in the spot heights, which didn't tally with the indicative street scene, but these inconsistencies have now been corrected and a comparative figure generated showing the increase in footprint of the new design over the approved footprint. So I have to confess, I find the indicative street scene a little awkward in that it appears that the new design has been put in a depression to ensure that it doesn't stand out, but nevertheless, I'm now of a view, looking at the incremental amount of footprint, that the increases in scale are probably just about acceptable on planning grounds. I would struggle to support anything larger, but it feels to me that the materiality of the increase in dimensions, particularly the minimal increase in height, is not sufficient to justify going against the officer recommendations. I agree that the design is tasteful, and the increase in height is minimal, and as we saw in the site visit, there's adequate parking on the site at the front of the property. So somewhat reluctantly, my inclination at the moment is to support the recommendation to approve, but I really would like to hear the views of colleagues who are not familiar with this site, who are coming in with a much clearer, a cleaner view, to see whether they've reached the same conclusion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other... Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I attended the site visit, it was very useful, thank you for arranging that. I just wanted to inquire about the levels. My only concern is to ensure that the levels on this site are correct so that it avoids any overlooking of the property next door, or mitigates against any overlooking of the property next door. I noticed on the appeal decision previously that they had under condition number five, they said about no development should take place until full details of the finished levels above ordinance datum, et cetera, et cetera, was given to the planning authority, and I wondered whether or not it might be appropriate to add that as a condition, or whether officers already feel that that is covered under the current conditions, condition number five within the report. Also, under the appeal decision, there was also a separate condition number eight, which said that site levels should not be raised other than in accordance with details, and I just wanted to make sure that the conditions that we've currently got within the report are robust enough, as was in the appeal decision. Thank you. A welcome officer's reply. Thank you.
Thank you, Gemma. Would you like to respond?
Thank you, councillor. I mean, yes, looking at condition five of the appeal, the added words above ordinance datum, I don't see why we can't amend condition five of the application to include that. And condition 16 replicates in a way sort of condition eight, so I think we would be fairly reasonable that that would be covered, so we can do that, so looking at a revised condition five. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I also was very grateful for the site visit, it's not an area I'm familiar with. Having looked at the plans, having looked at the sites and everything else, I think I would have very few concerns if it wasn't for a fact that it was an increase on the appeal decision, and the appeal decision came in and gave them permission to build a house, this application comes along and it's increased. Now, could officers confirm by how much the new house, the new proposal, exceeds the one that was approved under appeal? While they're thinking about that, could I just raise a point on conditions? Condition 12 is in there, which I'm grateful for, because in a rural area down a very small road, the construction transport management plan is very important, especially making sure that deliveries can turn around in the site rather than block the road up, but there's no timing on this, and I noticed in the appeal decision there was a timing, and I think it was from eight till 5.30 Monday to Friday, and eight to 12 on a Saturday, and I'm wondering whether the officers feel that we could add those timings into condition 12 if other members agree. Thank you.
Okay, while the officers are looking at that, on halfway down page 12, councillor Gray, it says the differences between the current proposal and that application, i.e. the appeal application, are the size of the proposed building. The proposed dwelling would be 1.7 deeper and 1.2 metres wider than that already granted permission, with an increase in ridge height of 0.1 metres, that's 100 millimetres. The proposed dwelling would have a 25% greater floor area than that already approved.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, for pointing that out, but it was the mass I was looking for, I'm afraid my maths aren't that good to work it out, but I wanted really an idea of the proportions, because it does look quite a big increase on there. Now, floor will give you a certain dimensions, 25% sounds a lot, but the overall sizes that stick out on the plan that shows the previous and this one did not look that extensive.
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd struggle to be able to give any more detail in terms of the differences between the two schemes. I mean, we've got the difference in depth and the difference in height, and the difference in floor area, I think that's all really that these officers can use to give an idea of what the additional mass would be. The other thing that we have is we have the two plans, if you wanted, I could pop them back up again, and you can have a look at between the two, compare them between the two, but I think that the information contained within the officer's report is the majority of what we can give you. Thank you.
And reference councillor Gray's other...
In reference to the other one, yes, I think we can quite happily include condition 12, I think, sorry, the working hours condition, I think it would have to form another condition rather than become part of the construction management transport, so we'll add that as a condition to any approval. Thank you.
Okay, would it be possible to have a working timescale and a delivery timescale? I was a bit concerned when we left the site with about seven cars coming to the end, and we found that one car was coming in, it was quite congested, and whether it would be possible to restrict deliveries to between nine and four, or would that officers consider to be unreasonable? I'm talking deliveries rather than working hours.
Yeah, I mean, if we have a condition 12 of the appeal, had both construction works and deliveries to and from the site, so that combined both, so we could, yes, we could replicate that, that's not a problem, and we would potentially say between eight to six, Monday to Friday, and eight to one Saturdays, and not at any time at all on Sundays or public holidays.
You don't feel that deliveries should be curtailed? Allowing people to get out first before deliveries come in, and people to come back after the deliveries have stopped?
I think the problem is, they could implement the previous scheme with that condition, and I'm not sure whether or not we could reasonably change the hours, I mean, I mean, deliveries, is the issue deliveries before nine o'clock? Is that...
It was particularly saying allowing people who go out to work in the morning, allowing their cars to go, and trying to hit deliveries at the quietest possible point for that lane.
Just take a minute on that one, thank you.
This is a particular problem for rural areas with very narrow roads.
Thank you, Chairman. My view is simply that the condition that the inspector imposed clearly is a reasonable one, I'm not sure that we have any evidence to suggest that it's necessary to change that, so I think my recommendation would be to stick with what the inspector's said, but if members feel strongly about it, then ultimately it's your judgement as to whether you want to impose that stricter condition, but as I say, my recommendation would be to stick with what the inspector's done. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Seaborn.
Thank you for letting me speak again, Chairman. Yeah, as a local member and bringing local knowledge, anyone who's had the pain of doing battle with the A281 between the hours of seven and nine in the morning will know that delivery vehicles will be an exceedingly unwelcome addition. So at the much larger Ricardo Court development, which is 24 properties, sort of two roads over, because of the school there, timing was restricted till, from, I think it was nine thirty till four in the afternoon, or three in the afternoon for deliveries, and that made a significant difference. Traffic is actually much worse, much worse by Mill Lane in the morning, and deliveries would... would potentially cause a major issue, particularly if you end up with the delivery vehicle having to try and reverse out onto the 281. So the point that councillor Gray makes is absolutely right, there's a real risk of delivery lorries turning up and people being bottlenecked into Mill Lane, totally unable to get out, and very little chance of solving the problem until the traffic has abated after nine o'clock, so I would certainly support a restriction on deliveries from after nine o'clock. Thank you, Chairman.
Right, councillor Voracewski, did you wish to speak to that discussion, or should I allow councillors Gray and Seaborn to propose an additional condition?
I shall wait until they produce an additional condition.
Thank you. Councillors Gray and Seaborn, would you like to propose that such a condition be imposed?
Yes, I would like to propose that we have the condition we've just referred to, the split hours between working hours and delivery. I think councillor Seaborn's point about the road is absolutely well-made, you could just see what's happening with a large lorry coming round, having to go back and forwards over both lanes in the morning, if we can avoid that, I think that a lot of people will at least give us the credit for that. So I propose that amendment to condition, taking advice from officers, that it's a new condition that covers eight till, I think six they said for working hours, and nine till four thirty for deliveries.
Councillor Seaborn, you wish to second that? Would anybody on the committee wish to speak to that amendment, or can I put it to the vote? Okay, members, you've heard the proposition, all those in favour of this additional condition... councillor Byham isn't joining in the voting on this, so that's unanimous, so if we could add that extra condition. Can I just ask, Chairman, on the revised recommendation, we've got subject to Conditions Two to Eleven, should that be Two to Eighteen? It's on page Three of your update sheet.
Yes, apologies, that's an error.
Okay, so then the new condition would be Condition Nineteen then. But, members, any, sorry, Beth.
I think, sorry, just to advise members, there would actually be two new conditions, there would be one amended condition, which would be Condition Five to reflect the ordnance datum in the wording, and then there would be a new condition, which would be Condition Nineteen, which would be the construction hours, and then there would be a new Condition, Condition Twenty, which would be the delivery hours, that's my understanding.
councillor Voracewski.
Thank you, Chairman, if you nearly forgot. Better late than never. Chairman, yes, it's just an observation and a comment more than anything else, I have some empathy with the objector, I really do, and the local residents around there, but however, the principle of development has been established, it was refused and then granted on appeal, and now it's come back with a 25% increase, and I think for the neighbours, that can be quite a disappointing prospect. However, the local ward member and Bramley Parish Council have no objection, I quite like the design, I do think it was a little bit of an overdevelopment on the site, but I would just add a word of caution that this might be setting a precedence for the future, that applications granted on appeal could just go through on the nod if we're not questioning them with that 25% increase, so I'll just err on the side of caution there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any further comment? councillor Deane.
Thank you. Like many others, it really does annoy me when they get an Appeal Decision and then put in for another application immediately, but we are where we are. It was a comment made by Mr Mahoney, so it might be the way, he said it, or the way I've interpreted, it said the condition for retaining the hedge in the Appeal, and then it says no vehicle access should be created, so I don't know whether the condition was about the access, therefore it would retain the hedge, or whether there was a particular condition about that, so I just wondered whether the officers just could confirm that for me. Thank you.
Officers.
I think it was just to retain the hedges, to be shown on the scheme to be retained.
This was the Appeal Decision that you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah. This application does show the hedge being removed to form the new access. So, members, may I move to the recommendation? Thank you. So the revised recommendation is that subject to Conditions Two to Eighteen, as set out on pages Twenty-two to Twenty-seven of the Agenda Report, and the amended Conditions One and Five, and extra Condition Number Nineteen regarding construction hours, and Twenty regarding delivery hours. Councillor, sorry, councillor Gray.
I think the officer said it was nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, so, well, additionally you said Two to Eighteen, Conditions Two to Eighteen.
I did say Conditions Two to Eighteen, and then I said plus Condition Nineteen, reference construction hours, and Condition Twenty, reference delivery hours.
My apologies, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Gray. All those in favour? Against abstention, one. That recommendation is approved. Moving on to item A2, which is our reference WA oblique 2018, oblique 1116, Little Dean, East Whitley Lane, Shamley Green, GU50TD, and the proposal is for the change of use of the land from horticulture to sui generis use as a dog exercise and training ground, including the erection of a building and store, and Victoria's going to introduce this application to us.
Thank you, Chairman. The application is for Little Dean, East Whitley Lane, Shamley Green, GU50TD, for the change of use of the land from horticultural to sui generis use as a dog exercise and training ground, including the erection of a building and store. First of all, just like to do a verbal correction with regards to page Thirty-three on the report of the numbers of representations, there are four letters of objection, not seven, and there are forty-seven letters of support, and not forty-four. Thank you. Here we have the location plan, in red, the access coming in here, and car parking area This is the extent of the ownership of the site, which is slightly larger than the application Here we have an aerial photograph. The application is retrospective, and it's been running for about a year, so the aerial photograph is prior to development, and this is the site here, access through here, car park, and the site is here. There is a bridleway that comes down the lane, and comes down here and around to the southern part of the site. Here we have the block plan, showing the ancillary buildings, we have an admin office here, and there is a metal store on the southern boundary. This is a plan of one of the ancillary buildings, there are two ancillary buildings, but the second plan is a bit faint and it wouldn't show on the overheads, but I do have a photograph later. This is the plan of the ancillary building. These are views of the site, and the southern boundary and northern boundary, you can see the ancillary, one of the ancillary buildings in the corner here, and again here, from the northern aspect. This is the equipment cage, which is on the southern boundary, that's the second ancillary building. We have the entrance to the site here, and further on we have the parking area, the main site to the right-hand side here. This is the bridleway buffer, there is a, the bridle path comes down here, this is from the southern part of the site here, and this is the edge of the exercise and training This buffer area is also owned by the owner of the site, it's within the blue line, which was on the earlier slide. These are views north and south of East Whitley Lane at the entrance of the site. And we have the determining issues, with matters of principle and technical opinion, our principle of development, green belt, loss of agricultural use, highway safety and parking provision, bridleway, ancient woodland and biodiversity. The matters of judgment are design and visual amenity, impact on residential amenity, new economic development, and very special circumstances. The very special circumstances are regarding the buildings being in green belt, and detailed on page Thirty-eight of the report. The building's limited scale and location, and the benefit to local employments are considered to outweigh any minimal harm caused to the green belt. And moving on to the update sheet, we have an additional officer comment. Following the site concern, following the site visit, concern has been raised regarding the trip movements generated from the proposal. The council have been made aware that there is a possibility, given the history and size of the site, should an agricultural or horticultural use be implemented, there is a possibility, this could generate as many movements. Additionally, no additional requirements have been raised by the County Highway Authority. Upon consideration, officers suggest that the recommendation of a temporary permission for three years only is a reasonable response to these concerns. There is additional condition of a maximum of twenty dogs only are allowed to be on-site at any time, and the recommendation is that subject to Conditions One to Six, as set out on the pages Thirty-one to Forty of the Agenda Report, and the additional Condition Seven on the update sheet, that permission be granted. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Victoria. Again, we've got public speaking, and Amy's just taking the microphone over to Diane Cashell, who will speak on behalf of the objectors.
I'm grateful to have this opportunity to speak for the objectors to the proposed change of use at Little Dean. The objectors live on East Whitley Lane and on the Guildford Road behind the dog training business. Until the arrival of the dog training business, K9DC, in 2013, the lane could best be described as a quiet and tranquil place in which to live, representing the very essence of the green belt. The Environmental Health Report emphasizes the need to preserve existing areas of tranquility for the promotion of health and wellbeing. K9DC has been operating without change of use being sought for five years. It originated as a dog walking business, which was tolerated as a minor nuisance by residents and drivers on the lane, but over the years, it has developed into a dog training centre. The many letters of support for this business are seen to be either from family members or clients of the operator, most of whom live miles away and are not affected by the noise. The main thrust of our objection is threefold: noise generated by the dogs, danger at the lane's entrance at dog collection and drop-off times, hold-ups and delays to traffic flow on the lane at certain times. East Whitley Lane is a bridleway privately maintained by the residents, the operator offers a collection and drop-off service, but not every client uses this. Every dog delivered by its owner generates four journeys along the lane. The increase in traffic connected with this business is marked, resulting in the frequent use of private driveways as passing places, increased frustration at delays where on the road surface, and occasionally dangerous congestion at the lane's entrance. This is caused by a buildup of traffic at the sharp bend immediately prior to the exit. Sometimes incoming drivers have to reverse out onto the Run Common Road, where the national speed limit applies and traffic can be very fast. This is a residential area, our bedroom overlooks the training arena. The noise pollution suffered by us at Rasay is endured by neighbours adjoining Little Dean on the northern side of the business, those further on down the lane, and neighbours on the Guildford Road. The Environmental Health Report makes several recommendations, including the restriction of business operating hours to weekdays only. Any restrictions on this intrusive business are welcome, but it seems very unfair that we are to be restricted to just two days a week for the full enjoyment of the peace of our homes. Another recommendation is that the number of dogs be restricted to twenty. From our perspective, this is still a pack. Therefore, should the planning committee decide to approve this application with conditions, we request that the number of dogs allowed on-site be limited to a total of twenty per day, instead of twenty per session. This would greatly reduce the noise at changeover times, and reduce the number of journeys along the lane. We also request that noise levels be officially monitored, which so far has not been the case. I thank you for listening, and hope you will give full consideration to the points raised by the local objectors in reference to this application, and refuse it.
Thank you. Now invite Natalie Thompson, the applicant, to speak, obviously in support of the application.
Dear members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity of addressing you this evening, and to speak in favour of the proposal. Thank you also to those members who visited my site on Monday to see firsthand how it operates. My name's Natalie Thompson, and I'm the applicant and also the owner and founder of K9 Development Centre. I started in 2013, five years ago. The site where K9DC is located is owned by my parents, and is situated adjacent to our family home, where I've grown up and lived for 23 years. The site was last used as a commercial nursery over 25 years ago, when my parents purchased the land and the house from the bank when the nursery went into receivership. It was covered in many large greenhouses then, as shown in the aerial photograph that was submitted with my application. My parents never used the land as a nursery, they cleared the buildings and provided me with the opportunity to use the site for my dog care and training business, which I began in 2013. Down East Whitley Lane, alongside K9DC, there are seventeen dwellings and a number of other businesses, including another dog sitting and boarding company, landscape gardening, equestrian, and also a plant nursery. Other commercial uses, such as Richard Noble's Landscape Contractors, who were based opposite K9DC, also operated there for many years. My planning application is Agenda Item A2, and I thank the officers for their very clear appraisal of the application, and their professional recommendation that permission be approved subject to six conditions. The application has been subject of extensive discussions with the case officer and her line manager. It fully accords with the National Policy Framework and the council's development plan, as confirmed in the Agenda Item A2 in front of you tonight. There are no objections from the Wannish Parish Council, subject to limitations of use, as covered by the suggested Conditions Five and Six. Surrey County Highways also have no objections, as well as Waverley Borough Council Environmental Health, subject to a three-year permission, which is covered by Condition Two. My dog care and training business is a well-respected and valued company within the local community. There are four members of staff, including myself, and we have a fantastic dog-to-hand ratio of five dogs to one person. This ensures the highest level of care is provided. We're open from Monday to Friday, eight AM till five thirty PM, and we close at weekends and on bank holidays. On-site, there is a shed, a metal storage cage, and also a small tent. The Agenda Report refers to the shed as an office, however, this is a very grand title for what is just a second-hand shed, which is used as a rest area for the more elderly dogs and the puppies who need a sleep every now and again. There is no overnight kenneling or boarding of the dogs on-site, and there are no organised events or visiting members of the public. The centre has adequate parking and plenty of space for the turning of vehicles, the majority of the dogs are collected by us from a fully created dog van from their homes, however, some dogs do drop their dogs off to us, on, sorry, owners, sorry, drop their dogs off to us on their way to work. This small business means everything to me, I've worked incredibly hard from day one to build it up to the award-winning company... This small business means everything to me. I've worked incredibly hard from day one to build it up to the award-winning company it is today. We provide an invaluable service to the local community and the surrounding areas, ensuring that the dogs are cared for and develop into the best versions of themselves possible. As you have heard, this application is supported by your officers and I have no objection to the recommended conditions. I therefore respectfully ask you approve my application in accordance with your officers' recommendation. I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, councillor Band.
Thank you, Chairman. And also, I'd like to thank the speakers for their contributions and the officers for organising, which was a pretty useful site visit. I pretty well object in principle to coming to look at retrospective planning applications, but I have to concede in this case, it was probably easier to view what was going on with seeing the thing in situ. And it was a, found it a very helpful site visit. I think undoubtedly there is a demand for the service that the applicant provides and it seems to me to be a useful use of a redundant nursery site and the area was well maintained. It also provides additional local employment in this area, which is always a significant benefit in the countryside. I understand and appreciate the concerns of neighbours and I think that the officer's proposal for a three-year temporary permission is a good way of really seeing how this works out over that period of time. So whilst I'd be interested to hear other members' views, I'm at the moment minded to support the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Gray. No, Councillor Gray. Sorry. Sorry, Ben.
I don't mind what you call me, as long as I get my opportunity. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Members. I attended the site visit and thank you very much for that. That was, it was extremely useful. And the sun shone, so that made it even better. Yeah, a doggy day centre. I am, we have dogs at home and so I am doggy orientated. I realise there is a need to have this type of facility, this type of amenity. Life has changed so much in the last, well, it's forever changing, isn't it, day by day? But so many people do go out to work these days and it's so important to have this type of facility, a doggy day centre, where the dogs can be dropped off, the kids go to school, the dogs are dropped off at the doggy day centre and everyone meets up for tea at five o'clock. I think this is, this is a wonderful initiative. It's using a space that has become derelict. It's providing work and skills for the local community and young people at that as well. And I would support this application. The fact that the report is limiting the facilities to a three-year space of time, I think is extremely good because there will be ongoing reviews. So if there are any problems at any times, these will be addressed there and then. I think this is, this is very good. So, yeah, I think this is a very intelligent diversification and use of this land and I like, I like what I see. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Henry. Councillor Goodridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reading at the bottom of page thirty-six about complaints to the Environmental Health Service, I just wonder whether we have any information as to how many and over what period. Presumably, it was only over the period when dog training started, as distinct from dog walking. But it would be helpful to know how many complaints there were and whether we have any information why they were not escalated. Maybe lack of evidence or whatever, because clearly there are certain things to keep the noise down, such as Condition Three. And being a temporary permission, clearly, if there is a lot of noise, that would be some evidence that would come before us in three years' time if they applied for it to be carried on. But I would be interested to know how many and over what period. And of course, if we grant permission, neighbours, if they, if they think they are suffering from excess noise, can always come to the environmental health department and complain and should be encouraged to do so if it is a genuine noise problem. But, and I assume that the condition, if we grant it, and I have to say on balance, I would support the application, would prevent us from having a sort of doggy sports day when everybody decides to turn up, because limiting it to twenty would probably make it a fairly small doggy sports day. But one can just see, they might have a sort of annual gala day or something. And I just want to know whether the current application would permit it or not permit it if the applicant decided it would be nice for all dog owners to have a special day when they'd all turn up and have some fun. But I think Condition Three will help and the new Condition Seven would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, do we have that sort of information to hand?
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. My understanding is from environmental health that one complaint has been received past year. With regards to the sports, sort of sports day type event, Condition Four is that there shall be no visiting members of the public to the site for purposes of dog training or exercising. And there is also Condition Three with regards to tannoids, which might be used in connection with that sort of activity.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very supportive of this type of business and really admire the people who put it into operation, because clearly there's a great need for it. And I'm sure that all of the people who actually entrust their beloved animals to this centre are very caring people and want the best for their animals, otherwise they might leave them at home during the day. But whilst I have that admiration and recognise the need, I also accept that there are people living within fairly close proximity to the site. Having tried to wade through the website, the letters from residents and people registering their comments, as has been made, mentioned, a huge number of those actually people were in favour of the application, but in the main, they lived away from the site. There was one I found who lived fairly close by, or very close by, who was in favour of the service. But for the people living close by, one little yapping dog can be terribly disturbing, can be very intrusive. Now, I do believe that we should be, if we go ahead and agree to this application, actually putting a limit on the number of dogs. And I'm not quite sure about sessions, how many sessions there are during the day. Perhaps I've missed that. So my feeling is that perhaps there should be a limited number of dogs on site. And if actually there's more than one session a day, then of course that would increase the number of possible vehicular movements to and from the site. And actually, considering this, it is a bridle way. I'm sorry I wasn't able to go on the site visit due to another commitment, but I do know the area very well. This is a bridle way. It is maintained by the people who use it. And in the main, they're residents, although there are some businesses. And that is another concern that I have. I'm fully in agreement, should we grant permission, should be for a temporary period. And I hope the people who are disturbed by it could, would take the trouble to actually mention this, notify Waverley Borough Council and perhaps the owners of the business of their concerns. I think, as I've said, I'm in favour of the business, but have concerns of the impact on the existing residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I attended the site visit. It was very useful, although I didn't know the area. I hadn't actually been into that site before. It's great to have, obviously, new businesses, especially employing younger people, which this business seems to do. And there are obviously problems with access on the road, which is a very narrow road. And if there is a lot of traffic, it will undoubtedly cause some impact on local residents. However, limiting the opening hours and looking at the three-year limited time that we're given permission for addresses that and also takes into account perhaps any noise nuisance from the dogs barking. I, one thing that I did observe is we did actually walk down the public footpath beside the site and the site was fairly visible from the public footpath. And I did wonder, very often dogs bark when they see something that they're not normally used to, just to sort of announce their presence. And I did wonder whether it would be possible to add any more screening, as in vegetation landscaping, along that side of the site at all, so that it would obscure the view of people using the footpath from the dogs at all, so that perhaps it would reduce down barking. And that was just one point I had to make. And also, one other thing was that it does seem that the dogs are out all the time and whether or not there is enough provision for the dogs to go in at any time. The actual building, the shed-like building, is okay for the odd older dog and perhaps the puppies to sleep in. But if the weather's really bad and the dogs are left out for a period of time and the workers with the best will in the world don't want to stand out in the rain with them for hours and hours, they could be left unsupervised and whether there is enough provision for the dogs to be undercover at all. Anyway, that was just a couple of things. I mean, largely I am very supportive of it, but there are two, two things that I'd just like to point, the screening and also the cover for the animals. Thank you, or dogs.
Thank you. I'll invite the officers to respond to the various questions at the end. I think that's probably the best way. Councillor Dinas.
Thank you. I can keep it brief because a lot more points have just been made, so thank you for that. It was mentioned at the, for the objector about the dangers. I think we have this problem on so many applications where we are concerned about the dangers going on to main roads. But unfortunately Surrey County Council haven't raised any objections, so it's very, very difficult in planning terms to actually make a decision on that, but I think we all know to it. The site visit was very useful. I mean, the dogs were well behaved. I did notice they were being fed treats on a regular basis to keep them quiet. I have to say, I would have done exactly the same things, but it did make it quite difficult to make that judgement. In relation to the noise, I can absolutely see the concerns there because once one dog starts to bark, they will all bark. The only thing I will say about environmental health, yes, it's, you know, it needs to be evidenced, there is recording equipment. And I would say, if we find that we are getting reports and environmental health feel it's appropriate, they can take some more positive action. I'm sure that can be done. I think it was councillor Ellis mentioned about the number of dogs now. And looking at the additional condition seven, I think this covers it. Because it says a maximum number of twenty dogs only are permitted to be on the site at any one time. So that, to me, that condition says you cannot have overlapping sessions because you're going to exceed your numbers and breach a condition. And I'm sure the officers will confirm that my understanding of that condition because that would then give me, I suppose, the comfort that there aren't going to be forty dogs at a certain period and there's a clear gap so you don't overlap. Like councillor Townsend, we walked down a bridle way, which I think was very useful. I absolutely agree. I do think it's a little bit exposed. I know from my own experience, when I had a dog, soon as it saw somebody coming near to its area, that's what would set it off. And I would support a condition that we put some sort of screening, which is agreed by the officers, to stop that. And I do think that would be very useful. But other than that, I think in planning terms, we are where we are on this. Thank you.
Councillor Seeball, and then I'll come back to the officers.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, like my colleagues, I found the site visit extremely useful and came away thinking that this is a nice business by and large. So the only comments I've got really relate to detail. I really thought about this more after I'd left than at the site visit, because I could have explored it when we were there. But the question of sanitation, I noted there was a portaloos outside. I don't know whether there's any washing facilities in the temporary building, but given the propensity of dog faeces to spread unpleasant diseases, I think it would be something that we should ensure exists somewhere on the site, adequate provision for the workers to be able to wash their hands at regular intervals. So that may exist in the temporary building. I didn't look inside, but it certainly should be investigated and I think that that's something that should be followed up on. The only other point I had, well, I also support the idea of screening. I was just a little bit concerned though, given that we're only giving permission for three years, how much investment a company, a business can actually put into doing something that's not guaranteed. It might take three years to actually get the screening in place. So I support the concept of it. I just wonder whether it's, there's a timing issue there. Condition four, I'm not quite sure what it means. It says there should be no visiting members of the public to the site for the purpose of dog training and exercising. Well, surely the customers are all members of the public and they've all got, they're going to turn the, turn up at the site regularly. So I, I think I sense that, you know, this is a reasonable condition. I just don't fully understand exactly what it says. Could officers just have, take a quick look at that and maybe suggest an alternative wording that provides greater clarity about what it's trying to express. But beyond that, I'm supportive of the general principle of this application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Officers, would you like to respond to those various points?
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, that was quite a few questions at one time, so we'll just take them one by one. If I can first look at councillor Townsend's questions. The two questions there were regards to the screening and the sheltering for the dogs. In terms of screening from the footpath, I'm just, I think what I'm wondering about is how onerous a condition would be to provide quite substantial screening on a situation that might happen very, or occurrence that wouldn't happen very often, it would be quite transient, people would tend to walk across the footpath not as, not too often. And whether or not, you know, we're being reasonable in asking the applicant to provide that amount of screening along that boundary, the extent of that boundary for that, you know, minor periods. But obviously, if that's something that members think is, you know, using their judgement, thinks that should be implemented or provided by condition, then, you know, that, we could discuss that. In terms of the shelter, there is already a shelter on the site, which can temporarily be used to keep the dogs out of wet weather. And I think officers would be satisfied that that being there would, would, you know, negate any sort of issues to have any other sort of conditions in shelter for the dogs. Thank you. Sorry, Chair. And in respect to councillor Dinas's question regarding the confidence with the condition for the twenty dogs, that does say at all times, so there would be two sessions per day. I bet it would be twenty dogs overall, both sessions, so we wouldn't be looking at forty dogs or anything like that. It'd be twenty dogs all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Townsend, how strongly do you feel about the screening?
I would say that it isn't for the entire length of the boundary. There's just a particular spot which we walk to. Past that spot, it's, there are, it's clearer. So my feeling would be, can we, you know, I take it on board totally what was said by councillor Seeball, that if this is a temporary approval, then it might be un- by councillor Seeball, that if this is a temporary approval, then it might be unreasonable to insist on the boundary treatment. However, perhaps an encouragement to the people that are running the business to perhaps do some additional planting in the area where it's a bit scant would be something that perhaps could be reasonably requested. With regards to the shelter for the dogs, I know that that comes under probably completely separate thing to planning, but the tent didn't seem appropriate for 20 dogs, I didn't think. But again, that might be something that could be looked into at a later date, or the applicant may have some response to that themselves. Again, it might be something that perhaps could be reasonably spoken to the applicant afterwards. I'm not going to insist on a condition.
Thank you. It was suggested that the shed and the tent were used, the shed especially was used for the older dogs and the puppies. So, yeah. councillor Band.
Just talking about screening, I can sympathise with the views of other members, but there is low-level screening, as we can see in that photograph around the place. And certainly in my experience, it's not just not what does dogs see, but what they hear. So to actually make it screening dog-proof would have to be a very substantial screen. I take the point that if there are gaps on the field boundary, then we should be encouraged the applicant to try and fill those. But I would find it difficult to really support substantial screening when, as we can see from the photograph, low-level screening is already there from the purpose, from the perspective of the dogs. And I'd have thought in a three-year temporary permission, maintaining that level of screening is certainly appropriate. To others to go much further, I, like councillor Seeball, have some doubts.
Thank you. Beth, you wish to make a comment?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it's worth bearing in mind that this permission, if granted, is for a period of three years. And so once the, any kind of screening is filled out, potentially we're reassessing that planning application for either a further temporary period or permanent period, or it could be, you know, it could be refused. So it is placing somewhat of a unjustifiable, unreasonable burden on the applicant, in my opinion. And that is, on the MPPG states that conditions which place an unjustifiable and disproportionate financial burden on an applicant will fail the test of reasonableness. So I would caution you against imposing a conditional screening. Hope that helps. Thank you.
I think I already said that I didn't think it was worth imposing a condition. I was just speaking that it might be nice to encourage the applicants for a further...
We can place an informative on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any further comments or shall we move to the recommendation? Jonny Goodley, the recommendation is that subjects to conditions one to six in the agenda report and additional condition seven on the update sheet and informatives one to three, permission be granted. All those in favour? Sorry. councillor Seeball?
Yeah, I didn't get a response on washing facilities and an agreement that maybe rewording of condition four might be appropriate. Could we just have a comment on those, please?
Sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. I would question whether or not that's an actual planning consideration. I would think it's more of a health and safety issue, possibly governed by other legislation. And in planning terms, we shouldn't be duplicating other legislation. Thank you, Chairman.
What about the slight wooliness of condition four, wording of condition four? Any thoughts on that? councillor Townsend, while they're deliberating.
Whilst they're deliberating, can I just suggest what I took from condition four was that there should be no visiting members of the public other than clients? Did it mean that to this, that's what I took it as? But I may have, is that right or wrong?
Yes, we're just thinking about rewording the condition actually to say no visiting members of the public save for the clients of the dogs to the site for the purposes of dog training or exercise would make it more clear, I think. Thank you.
Yes, I think that would be better. So revised recommendation that subjects to conditions one to three and five to six in the agenda report, additional condition seven on the update sheet and revised condition four, as just discussed, and informatives one to three, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
Sorry, and the additional informative regarding the screening?
And the additional informative regarding the screening.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. That application is approved. I don't know if anybody wants to leave the public gallery now? Welcome back. And move on to item B1, which is referenced WA 2018 1555, land at Queen's Way Cranley. And the proposal is an application under regulation three of the Town and Country Planning General Regulations 1992 for the construction of new parking areas and access path. And I'd invite Jessica to introduce the application. Jess.
Thank you, Chair. This is an application book for committee under regulation three because Waverley is the applicant. There's a verbal update to the report that two further letters of support have been received, which totals a six, which totals six letters of support. The site is located either side of Queen's Way. At the moment, they comprise two grass areas. The proposal seeks to implement 16 number of street parking spaces either side of Queen's Way, which will comprise seven number base spaces, sorry, seven number base spaces here, located parallel to Queen's Way, and then a total of nine number base spaces in this area of the site. The spaces conform to the regulation for size of parking spaces for cars. Site is located within the developed area of Cranley. And therefore the development would be in regard to visual immunity, impact on highways, impact on residential immunity, impact on trees and other considerations. Some photographs of the site looking in from the south and from the west, I think. These are determining issues. So the impact on visual immunity, it's considered that the extent of parking and associated hard standing is of an amount which will not compromise the visual character of the street scene or area and sufficient green roadside immunity space will be retained. There's not considered to be a detrimental impact on the residential amenities of nearby properties. Post-development will not remove any private garden immunity space associated with surrounding residential dwellings. The county highway authority is undertaking an assessment of the site in terms of the likely net additional traffic generation, access arrangement and parking provisions, and is satisfied that there would not be a severe impact on the safety operation of the adjoining public highway subject to conditions three to five, so in the agenda report. There are a number of trees which serve immunity value where there is retention, which form part of the site, as you can see here, tree one, tree two and tree four. There's a small tree, tree three, which wasn't deemed of a high immunity worth retention. Condition two has been attached to the report, which would implement a pre-commensment condition that root protection measures are implemented prior to the construction phase of the development. And officers are satisfied that this would prevent any harm or adverse impact to the trees which are worthy of retention. And that's it. Recommendation is to grant the application subject to conditions.
Thank you, Jess. Slightly puzzled by condition four, which seems to be that the development that we're about to discuss shall happen. Slightly odd condition. Whilst you're looking at that, I don't know if any members would like, councillor Townsend?
Thank you. Just to say that several residents of Queen's Way have spoken to me about supporting this application and are very keen to get additional parking spaces. When the estate was built, obviously not so many people had cars. And there are a lot of cars parking on the grass verges, which is eroding the grass verges and making them look awful. I welcome the fact that obviously we're not losing trees. And I know when we looked at the previous application, it may have lost a tree, so we have moved where the parking is going. However, saying that, the other green areas in the area where the parking was going to go does suffer from people parking on there. And whether or not as part of this application, we could look at the additional addition of some bollards, some of the little wooden bollards on some of the green areas to try and protect them would be very welcome. I know from some of the applicants, some of the residents as well, living down there. So whilst I welcome this application, and I think it will be much better for the road, I do think that as, in a general way, that we need to look at protecting some of the other areas because people are parking on other grass verges. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Townsend, with your local knowledge, can you just explain to us where else they are parking on the plan that's in front of us? Is it another area?
Do you see where the block is there? So they're parking, they're tending to park, yes, on there, but also on the other green area then to the west of the site, of the red block, on the other side of the road, yes?
Thank you.
I just wondered whether it is something that, again, it may not be conditionable, but perhaps it's something that we can, we could look at because it is causing the erosion of the grass, grassed area opposite. Thank you.
Perhaps if it continues after the new spaces are provided, it's something that our estates department can look at. councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Chairman. I totally endorse everything that my colleague has said. It's not actually in my ward, but I know the area very well. And I have to say, I wondered just when the photographs were taken because I've never seen the area so devoid of abandoned cars in my life in all, well, since the development was actually built. It is a total and utter nightmare. Cars are not parked, they are abandoned. And to actually get through the area is virtually impossible. And for emergency vehicles, I think it's a real problem. I think as well, I totally support the fact that the other green amenity areas in the area need protection. Because although I hugely welcome this number of parking places, it's not going to answer the overall need. And the cars will continue to be parked on the other green areas. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Vorjesk.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, parking in Cranley is very interesting because in high-density areas we do get this problem. And there's another area that could benefit from additional parking, so I absolutely support this, the recommendation in here and the increase in the parking. As I say, like councillor Ellis has just said, you know, there's other areas of my ward where cars are just abandoned. And we're working with Surrey County Councils, look at the verges and try and get some drawings up thinking there. So I'd like to see this extended across different parts of the borough, as different parts of Cranley East and West, to ensure that we can keep it looking as good and tidy and not destroy the actual verges and that we should be maintaining as good green spaces. Absolutely endorse the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Members, you happy, councillor Henry?
Good, Chairman. I do know this area quite well, actually. Yeah, there really is a need to get some, to pretty up the parking round there. There really is a need to get the cars off the verges. They're making such a mess of it. It really is chewed up. Yeah, I think the parking squad is for the Waverley Borough need to look at probably all the social housing schemes around the area because this is happening everywhere. And it's so messy, it really is. This is, this is giving us 16 parking spaces. This is a good move in the right direction. And let's see some more of this, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, I move to the recommendation. Oh, councillor Grace.
It would be very remiss of me if I didn't mention electric car parking charging. I think the practicalities though would be quite difficult, but it would certainly appeal to me if we could put an informative in there to basically suggest that they examine whether there's a possibility of putting electric points in there. I don't know what, whether there's any electricity around, so I think it would be unrealistic to make it a condition, but an informative would send a message to Waverley.
Thank you. Beth.
Thank you, Chairman. councillor Grace, condition five, so it's a lone condition on the final page. It does, it does provide that.
Satcloth and ashes. Gemma.
Just to come back on a couple of points with councillor Townsend. What we will do is we'll investigate if the land that we've discussed up there is actually in our ownership and we'll have a discussion with the relevant departments in consultation with you as well about providing bollards. And councillor Else, condition four, looking at rewording that? Potentially looking to say maybe the vehicle spaces hereby approved shall not be first put into use until space has been laid out on site with the according with the approved plans.
That's the same thing though, is it? You can't park there and do the parking spaces.
No, but I think what we're trying to do is protecting, what we're trying to say is to ensure they don't park on there until the space has been provided.
Right, members, the revised recommendation is that subject to conditions one, two, three and revised condition four and condition five as on the agenda, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Jonny Goodley, that's another application we've approved. So thank you for your time and I wish you a safe journey home.